Need to order roll call.
Vtech.
Here.
Huber.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Ader.
Here.
Mindell.
Here.
Murdick.
Here.
Elifson.
Here.
Trudeau.
Here.
Negro.
Here.
Metzinger.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Who fall.
Here.
Frannick. Liz Frannick. Stark.
Here.
Stendor.
Here.
Reamer.
Here.
Husey.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
I'm here on the phone.
Liz Frannick is present, therefore we have twenty present.
Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence and then we'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic of our citizens. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we need approval and adoption of the agenda. Mr. Pase.
I'll move to approve.
George Pase makes some motions, second.
Ron Stender will second.
Ron Stender's seconds. Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now we're going to have the public hearing on the 2025 Ashland County proposed budget. Clarence.
I'll make a motion that we go into public hearing for purposes of hearing comments on the proposed 2025 budget.
Clarence. Marty Vtech seconds. Questions? All those in favor of going into the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do, do, do we need a roll call?
I don't.
We do a closed session, but I don't know about.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, okay, we'll do a roll call just to cover ourselves. Thank you.
Schultz. This is to go into public hearing.
To what now?
Cool, to go into public hearing.
And now am I supposed to respond?
Yes or no?
Yes.
Ader.
Yes.
Mindell.
Yes.
Murdick.
Yes.
Elifson.
Yes.
Trudeau.
Yes.
Negro.
Yes.
Metzinger.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Kenny.
Yes.
Who fall.
Yes.
Frannick.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Stendor.
Yes.
Reamer.
Yes.
Husey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Vtech.
Yeah.
Huber.
Yes.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Now we're in a public hearing for the proposed budget. Anybody want to talk at this point? Yes.
Yeah.
Good morning. My name is Carver Harrys. I'm the Executive Director of Ashland Area Development Corporation, or for short, we call it AADC. I'm here today because I'm concerned that the proposed county budget for 2025 does not include funding to support the growth of small businesses as it has in past years. AADC is a not-for-profit business. We are independent of the county and we're independent of any city government. Our mission is to provide resources to support incoming and existing Ashland area entrepreneurs and businesses. In 2023, AADC helped 200 businesses. We helped them develop business plans, find grants and loans. We provided classes on how to manage their finances and helped them find mentors for the inexperienced entrepreneurs as they were starting out and launching their businesses. We don't charge for any of our services. They are completely free. As a not-for-profit business, AADC has its own Board of Directors, which is comprised of local people who volunteer on my board. They are small business owners, they're local educators, and they're the leaders of other nonprofits in Ashland County. My board also includes the county administrator. AADC created this seat on AADC's board years ago to invite the county government to collaborate with AADC. My board and I believe that the most efficient way for Ashland County to rise out of its current financial situation is to build stronger small businesses and expand our tax base. During the last two years, Ashland County has contributed $50,000 each year to support the programs that AADC provides to Ashland County's small businesses. During those same two years, AADC applied for and received over $2 million in grants. This is an incredible return on investment for a $100,000 investment by the county government. This $2 million was used to launch and expand businesses in Ashland County. For example, we provided the down payment that allowed Madeline Island's convenience store to transform into the island's only grocery store. We provided the down payment that purchased the old Bayview motel on the west end of Ashland across from Walmart. It is now the new location of Hudson Square Coffee. We provided the down payment that purchased the vacant veterinary clinic at the corner of Binsfield Road and Farm Road out by the elementary school, and it has since reopened as the Lakeview Animal Hospital. I don't envy your job as county board supervisors, having to decide where the county's limited financial resources are going to be spent next year, especially with all of the mandates that you're faced with. But the return on investment that AADC has demonstrated and the need to build our small businesses in order to turn around the county's financial challenges seems very obvious to me. However, if you decide not to invest in small business development by including AADC or by excluding AADC in the 2025 budget, I would encourage you to use that $50,000 to hire a new county employee or start a brand-new county department that will provide specific support to our entrepreneurs. We can't leave our small businesses hanging without that vital support. Would you like me to remain available for questions? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? No. Comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Hearing none?
Should suspend the hearing.
Okay, motion to suspend the hearing.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the public hearing and leave it open for the time being in case others come forward with comments.
Okay, motion by Clarence. Is there a second?
This is Huber. I'll second it.
Second by Rich Huber. Other questions? Voice vote? Roll call? What? Roll call, yes. No.
I think it's just a voice.
Okay.
You can go out on a voice.
Voice, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Ashland School District Superintendent, Mr. Rob Prater.
Point of clarification?
Oh, yes.
Is this presentation like a public comment, or is this a time where we could ask questions also?
No, this isn't separate agenda item, and you can ask questions on a presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me attend. My name is Rob Prater. I'm the superintendent of the school district of Ashland. I am here to give information about a referendum that will be on the November 5th general election ballot. The school district of Ashland is asking all eligible voters living in our district if they will approve an operations referendum. The question will impact our 1,850 students, 264 staff members, and our entire district. Do a couple quick explanations of the what? We are seeking a five-year non-recurring operations referendum. If approved, it will increase our budget by $2 million for each of the next five years. Some of the terminology there. If it goes five years, why is it called non-recurring? In the state of Wisconsin, a recurring operations referendum lasts in perpetuity or until the voters actively repeal it. A non-recurring lasts for a set amount of time, typically somewhere between three and 10 years. Our district is seeking five years of funding. Operations means it goes to maintain operations costs of the district. A school district, the lion's share of our funding goes to staff compensation. The funds are requested to maintain our current levels of staffing, allow for compensation improvements for all staff, and to pay increased costs related to operations, transportation, utilities, supplies, curriculum materials, et cetera. Why is the district seeking this? As most of you probably know, the state of Wisconsin does not have a uniform pupil, per pupil funding rate in Wisconsin, so districts fund by levy based on whatever was levied in 1993. The system was put in place 31 years ago, and it leaves an unequal funding system for our different school districts. And prior to that, school districts were allowed to increase at the rate of inflation. State of Wisconsin uses CPI. That has not happened. In 2010 with Act 10, there was an actual cut to school funding, and since then, most years have not risen to the level of CPI. If they had over the last 15 years, roughly since Act 10, our district would have about $3.4 million more in funding available than we do currently. The funding systems, if you look at the white page at the bottom, Ashland is allotted $11,000 per pupil. Bayfield is $15,350. I'll point out, South Shore is $18,034. The state average is $12,505. So Ashland, if you were to put those numbers onto our per pupil count of 1850, you'd see that we would have about $8 million more if we had Bayfield's level of funding, $13,000 more with South Shores, and so on. Just point of fact that is interesting is a private high school in the state of Wisconsin receives $12,000 per pupil. Why now? How has the district been able to make it 31 years since the funding system was put in place? There are two reasons that now is crucial. One, the federal government increased funding to school districts during the pandemic. For about four years, we received approximately 1.6 million per year. This is actually more than we needed, but it was not always used for what the federal government intended. Federal government intended for loss of learning for students that lost school time during the pandemic, mental health issues related to not being in social situations during the pandemic, air quality, PPE, things like that. We were able to do much of that. We also had to carry our operating costs during that time because the state of Wisconsin, for each of the years of the pandemic, did not increase funding at all. The other reason that we've been able to make it this long is it's mostly been off of the backs of our employees. Our staff has often taken 0% increases. Our staff have often gone into a contract year without knowing what their compensation would be. We believe that we need to, in order to keep a high-level staff in a very tight time of teacher shortage, be able to increase ours. How will they be applied? About 40% is to maintain our current levels of staffing. We have had to shed some of the positions that were introduced during the pandemic, some of our support staff positions. About 40% is to increase staff wages. We are targeting for our teachers about 4% a year for each of the next five years, and about 20% is to account for inflation, things like diesel, food, all the costs that go along with educating our students. As curriculum resources are less and less available in paper copies, paper copies become more expensive. Of course, what voters want to know is what it will cost them. This $2 million would equate to about $1,081 increase per pupil. It would not raise us to the state average, but it would raise us to where private schools are funded in the state of Wisconsin. For a median homeowner in our school district, which very unscientific method, but we checked real estate websites and looked for a median home in cost, came at about $195,000, so we rounded to $200,000. In year one, the school portion of taxes would increase by $186. In year two, they would not increase over that $186. They would increase by 72 over this year's. In year three, it would be $42. In year four, $32. In the last year, we didn't put in a number because it's plus or minus $5, either $5 above what it is now or $5 less. We are pleased that our mill rate has lowered from 7.02 to 5.58. So a $200,000 homeowner in the school district of Ashland, next year will pay $1,116 towards school taxes without the referendum. That would raise to $1,302 with a successful referendum. This is lower than was predicted of $1,404 without a referendum. So there is, there is a lower tax rate even with the referendum in place next year. What will our school, what will our school district do if we do not pass the referendum? We will have to cut staff. We will not be able to give the, the targeted 4% increase to our teaching staff, and we'll have to make cuts across the board. Things, things that will be recommended, it's of course up to the board to make the final decision, will be things like busing routes, extracurricular activities, supplies and materials. But again, the lion's share will be in staff and in staff compensation. My email address is on there if anybody wants to reach out. I sent around the registered voter mailing to you all as well, and I can answer questions if you have them.
And any questions?
They looked at me because I asked the question. So your main goal with this $2 million per year, which in the front it says increase the funding by $2 million a year, and then in the back here, what will be the cost to me? It says request up to $2 million a year for five years. You're targeting staffing.
Correct.
You've had some issues in the press lately that is quite disappointing as not only a county board member, but as a citizen. These are issues that affect our future leaders. How are you going to target this funding?
Again, 40% is towards staff, maintaining current levels of staffing. 40% is targeted towards the, the compensation increase. Again, our staff is well, well behind, not only inflation, but the average in the market, which is, our staff make about $42,000 less over a career, and we would like to raise that closer to average. Interesting note that you did point out is what, it says 2 million up to 2 million. We cannot. We have to put $2 million on the ballot for legal purposes. As we go through the five years, the first year, we do not need 2 million. We do not anticipate levying that 2 million. We don't think that $186, we think it'd be closer to half of that. It gets a little bigger in year two, and it increases. Year five, it does not cover what would be our difference in budget. So we wrote it to be one number because the question gets very long when you do 1 million, 1.3, 1.6. And so to simplify the question, we put in 2 million, and we do not anticipate at least during the first two years, levying all $2 million.
Yeah, having that explanation would have been really good for the general public because a lot of people wonder why those numbers are different and how it affects them. I'm happy to hear about the staff piece. You know, there's, there's been also a center of one of your board members for kind of asking too many questions, and as a county board member and a large pain in these guys' butts, I ask the questions here. So I have a hard time when a public entity is asking for money and then wants to not have the questions. And I know that's not a you thing, that's your board thing, but I prefer you carry that back. It's a public trust issue. And like I said, these are our future leaders that are the ones that are being affected. I'm kind of, I'm a data person, so comparing us to all these other areas is a little disconcerting because again, it's not, it's not a flat rate. So going, well, if we had this, well, if we had this, hey, if the county board had some of that too, we can if that.
Can I jump back to answer a part of your question? You had asked about staff retention being part of the goal, and I didn't quite finish answering that. We did, coming out of the pandemic, we did have 25% staff turnover, which is very difficult for a school district to maintain. School districts are made on institutional knowledge and stability. We are very pleased that we cut that to about 14% and then about 12%. Research would say a healthy school district will turn over between 8 and 12% of its staff each year. We are getting much closer to that. We believe it is because we have built a positive culture for our staff to work in. The the data that we have backs that up, but the number one reason that we have that staff is leaving is because of money, and it is a $10,000 raise in Bayfield or a $10,000 raise in Washburn. So we don't know how long we can sustain that, can sustain that as the difference. When funding is increased in the state, it is universal, so we don't cut into the difference with Bayfield, Washburn, South Shore, and it means when we can raise wages, they can raise wages just as much. And so we know that, that targeting that, we, again, we targeted a positive culture for our staff. We need to target positive wages as well.
I flinch when you say positive culture for the staff, seeing some recent things. But also you may have data that shows that you don't have a lot of complaints because maybe the process isn't something that people are comfortable with. So maybe working on that process to actually show some of that, because I know people who have their students, whether it's kids or grandkids that have issues, that do not feel comfortable making those big complaints to make a tick on that list that is the published one. So working on that process might be something you want to do to make sure that all of the students, in that many students, there, there has to be more people that are having issues. It's just statistically not possible that there's one in one category and a couple in the other, especially with the history of this area. So I I thank you for answering my questions. Like I said, when you put out something like this explaining why there is a difference in some of these, I, I, I'm the director of the aging unit right now, and explaining to seniors why these numbers, why would it go down if you're still doing the same thing? So it's a heavy explain for me to do. It's, it's not just seniors that aren't going to understand this, it's people across the board.
With the current media landscape, that's why we're requesting to, we've been to all the town board meetings. We have been city council, any civic group that will have us, we have been out, and we have put in a request, the aging unit, and so we're happy to come out. There's a few days until the ballots, and we have requested that in the past, so we hope that maybe you could respond to Amanda Tudor in our business office. She would love to come.
I can dig through my emails.
Any, any, any other questions? See, none. Thank you very much.
This is Liz Frannick. I actually have a question. Okay, my question is the school security. I mean, if you have that less of staff, is this referendum going to help school security? And how can we put that to the public? Thank you.
The, the issues. Our previous referendum in 2017 took care of a lot of the brick and mortar school security pieces, and having less staff, I, I, I think one could reasonably say might let, make a school less secure. We have had quite a few. May have noticed in the media, we were swatted two, two and a half years ago. We had a great response. The, the local law enforcement and emergency services were wonderful, and we have had an incident of an intruder. Again, they were wonderful. I don't think this affects their ability to respond, but us having more staff in a, in a building typically raises the security for students. So I know that's a very indirect answer to your, to your question.
Thank you. Another question I have is cultural sensitivity with, if this increase, could we hire more of a cultural sensitivity, not just Native American students, but if we have an influx of like Croatian or not Croatian, but the, the students that may be working their way here from Russian and different countries and Mexican communities? Thank you.
The, this is not intended to increase any staff or programming. It is simply to maintain. The state of Wisconsin does have a funding for English lang, English language learning students. We do have staff dedicated to that. Currently, we would have well under 1% of students that are English language learners, and we need a critical core in order to, to kick in larger funding. I think the, the funding the state provides on that isn't, isn't adequate either, but this, this would not do anything to increase services in that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we go to public comment pertinent to agenda items, resolutions, ordinance of the day. Three minutes per speaker. Anyone for public comment? Online? Hearing none at this time. We will go to the regular agenda. We need approval of the We need approval of the September twenty six, twenty twenty four county board minutes. Mr. Passay?
So moved.
George Passay makes a motion, is there a second?
Uh, Tom Reamer.
Tom Reamer seconds. Changes, corrections? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Resolution R ten dash twenty twenty four dash fourteen eighty six aid to counties with Indian reservations.
This is a standard resolution we pass everywhere, gets us funding from the state.
Laura?
This is Laura Negro, I'll make that motion.
Laura Negro makes a motion to approve.
Ron Stender will second.
Ron Stender seconds, any questions? Mr. Kenny?
Ashland County had a contract with Bad River for additional law enforcement in the past and we're hopefully working to come to an agreement again. Can you tell me how the funding in this is related to that? Um, and how if we measure extra services, how do we account for providing what's in this resolution versus anything additional?
All right, this funding helps offset the expenses associated with public law two eighty, which is a federal law that requires counties to provide law enforcement on reservations. So um as part of our normal standard patrol, we've we do the PL two eighty enforcement on the on the reservation. This is just the state giving us a reimbursement to cover part of that that obligation.
Mr. Metzger?
How does this compare to last year?
It's about the same.
Pardon me?
It's about the same, within a couple of dollars.
Wait, did we ever come to an agreement with the Bad River about the bad? Like, there was some sheriff costs that had been billed that they refused to pay for a couple of years?
Um, we got most of the money. We're we we did come to an agreement with them, we received most of the money. We are still in conversation about actually this amount of money. Um, they're under the impression that this should be counted as part of their money. However, we spoke to the DOJ and it's not. It's it is it is to re- it is to reimburse us for normal coverage that we 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 apply. So we're still in conversations with Bad River about that forty thousand. Um, and obviously, things won't get done till after the election.
No other questions? Motion and second has been made to approve the resolution. All those in favor say aye. Close?
Aye.
Motion carried. Resolution R ten, twenty twenty four, fourteen eighty seven, a resolution establishing compensation to be paid to all nonrepresented employees of Ashland County in the calendar year twenty twenty five.
Uh, so this is the annual step increase for employees. Um, it applies to all employees who've been with Ashland County since June thirtieth, two thousand twenty three. All other employees would get a pay raise on their first anniversary. And of course, I'm exempted from this.
So, Mr. Metzger?
I'll make a motion for adoption.
Mr. Metzger moves to approve, is there a second? Rich?
This is Rich Huber, I'll second that.
Rich Huber seconds, questions? Mr. Passay?
Uh, right, right, we discussed the wording on this previously. I'm going to abstain from this vote. It's illogical to me that someone will receive this increase um on June thirtieth uh twenty twenty five, and then we come to January one, twenty twenty six. They repeat whatever the rest of the county employees receive just after another six months. So it makes a lot more sense to me if this were prorated by the number of months that the employee had been in service during the past year. Um, but I don't really oppose the concept, I'm going to abstain.
Laura?
Are we going to have to do this? This isn't just because of the general increase from people stepping up from year to year. This is just because of the people that are hired mid-year? Is that?
Yeah. Um, otherwise, you'd have somebody who gets hired um in, say, February, and they would get their annual increase, they would get their pay raise in January and then their annual increase in February. So they effectively get two in one year. So we are um, we're just trying to make it fairer for everybody.
Okay, it would be nice to have those kind of introduction sheets that we had before that would give like a general rundown on this. It's not only explains it to us a a little better along with whatever committee came from. I see this one came from executive, but it helps the public understand what these are for instead of just boom, here's the thing.
Any other questions? Motion and a second to approve resolution R ten, twenty twenty four, fourteen eighty seven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carried.
Abstain.
One exception. Resolution R ten, twenty four, fourteen eighty eight, resolution providing for issuance, sale and delivery of a two point two million, two hundred twenty four thousand, six hundred twenty three dollars. General obligation promissory note, series twenty twenty four of Ashland County, Wisconsin, establishing the terms and conditions thereof directing its execution and delivery. Is there a motion?
This is Pat, I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Kenny makes a motion. Mr. Vtech?
Check out second.
Party Vtech seconds. Um, just for clarification, if the administrator will uh give a little feedback on this, in case somebody has a question.
So this is our annual debt levy resolution. Um, as everybody knows, we we do the year plus a day notes. Um, so they count as long term. So this is the annual one, it's about, it's roughly the same as last year's. Look, I, so. And this covers highway construction, um IT stuff, all of our capitals, all of our capital spending is included in here.
Mr. Metzger?
This will be paid back during the year before before the end of the year of twenty five?
Yes, so yeah, um typically what we do is we take the note out in December, and then in February, when we get our tax collections, we'll pay it off because the loan we get has a zero, has a no prepayment penalty.
Any other questions? Motion's been made and second to approve this resolution, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, Laura, excuse me.
It says that it was um solicited proposal, so that was posted in the paper and such?
Uh, we solicited from the state bank like we always do.
Okay.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, so motion made and second to approve resolution, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Resolution R ten, twenty four, twenty twenty four, fourteen eighty nine, a resolution to authorize the hiring of MWK LLC for fiscal year twenty twenty five.
So um as many of you know, Mike and Steve have been with us for a little while. They've saved us literally hundreds of thousands of dollars or and or found money that we should be getting. Um, I don't anticipate using them as much next year, but it's nice to have them around, and I think they'll still end up saving us money.
Is there a motion? Bill?
I I'd have a question before the motion. Or is that not?
No.
Okay, go ahead. I I don't want to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Kenny?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Blake?
I'll second that.
Okay, now questions. Bill?
How much is this costing us this year or next year? How much are we?
We, it costs us about twenty five thousand dollars, but this current calendar year. Next year, I expect about about half of that.
Half of that?
Yeah.
Laura?
Why don't we have an amount listed in here or an up to?
Um, because we don't know how much we're going to use them, but if you'd like to amend it to put an up to, that's certainly appropriate.
Mr. Metzger?
Another question. Uh, is this in our general budget?
Um, yeah, actually, we have it, we're using contingency. It's going to come out of contingency in the budget.
Mr. Passay?
Uh, were there any competing offerings for these services?
All right, no, we we have an ongoing relationship with this with Mike and Steve.
Mr. Kenny? Or, oh.
In regards to the up to, um, going back to when Mr. Pufall was chair, um, he had asked our state representatives at the time, Janet Buley and Beth Myers um in Madison, if they could offer the county assistance. And from that conversation came, I believe, twenty five thousand dollars in funding to write a financial plan. And at that time, it was recommended as to us to um consult with Mike and Steve, who have extensive experience um um with county government. That's been a very productive relationship, and we've continued that. And not only have they saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, but they've been working with staff to update our processes. And I can tell you, when the city of Ashland about a decade ago needed to upgrade their software and processes, that was a very expensive process because it was all hired out. So these folks have been working with our staff, and I think that has gone really well. So it's not just the savings, it's the upgrades um which ultimately will make us more efficient. And they're helping us from a budget standpoint, understand what we're doing much better than we did a few years ago. And and that to me is really helpful. But as far as the number go, we started with twenty five thousand. Um, and I think on average, we've de- decreased that amount as upgrades have been made and they've gone through stuff. I personally would be comfortable with twenty five as a cap on this. If the administrator would agree with that, I believe he would.
That's fine with me.
All right, are you doing that?
I'm I'll make offer an amendment to put a cap of twenty five thousand on the services for twenty twenty five.
I would second that amendment.
Okay, so a a motion to make an amendment by Mr. Kenny, seconded by Ms. Negro?
Do you, do you want to make it simple and add of another uh be it resolved clause? That just says a a cap of twenty five thousand?
I would be fine with adding a be resolved clause to put a cap of twenty five thousand for twenty twenty five.
Okay. So, Mr. Kenny, Ms. Negro, Mr. Metzger?
Has this been approved by the finance committee or brought up to them at all?
Yes, finance committee knows about it.
Okay, did they put a dollar amount on that?
No, they did not.
Mr. Vtech?
Could you repeat the amendment, please?
Yeah, um, it would be uh be further resolved that a cap of uh twenty five thousand dollars should be up to twenty five, payment should be up to twenty five thousand dollars. For the for fiscal year twenty twenty five.
So we're gonna have a motion, we have a motion and second on the amendment. Correct? So we'll vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of amending that, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carried. Now, now we need a motion to
Prove as amended.
Approved as amended the resolution. But as amended. Is there a motion to approve as amended? Mr. S?
Yeah.
Well, you have the motion I made.
You have the motion already.
Prior to the amendment?
Yes. Yeah, they they had to bring it up.
Okay, and as as long, okay.
Yeah, you had to bring it up first before you could amend it, so.
Okay, so we have the motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Yep. Oh, George? Oh. Okay.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Right. Okay, resolution R ten, twenty twenty four, fourteen ninety, approve switching from a self-funded healthcare plan to the state plan. Option P zero four.
Okay, so uh this is something, or do you, do you want to put on the floor first, or do you want me to talk?
You better have a motion, otherwise I'm not going to let you talk. Is there a motion, Mr. Kenny? Or Mr.?
Brad Ray. Brad Ray will motion to approve.
Mr. E makes a motion, second?
This is Pat, I'll second.
Pat Kenny seconds it, now.
Okay, so back in September, the county board voted to allow us to apply for state insurance. Um, the finance committee's been looking at this issue for years, I would say. Um, and it finally came to a head this year. Um, it became very apparent that our current self-funded model is not sustainable. Um, while we did get a no premium increase this year for twenty five, um, that the further we looked out, the more we knew it was going to start costing a lot more money. So when we got the quote back from the state, they they want to impose a thirty percent um surcharge on our premiums. While we did the math, it came out to about the same thing as a a family would pay now with dental insurance. It came within a couple of dollars a month. So uh the benefits are much better with the state plan. Um, the deductibles are much lower, the system is much more stable. It has every state employee, every state retired employee. It has multiple counties and municipalities on it. It's quite simply, it just has a much larger pool of people to insure, which mitigates more risk. Um, so the finance committee and the executive committee both approved moving to the state plan. The budget numbers in the budget reflect this movement to the state plan. Um. There is going to be one issue that we have to overcome. Um, I'm hoping you guys can do that today. Cur- currently, when healthcare is taken out of an employee's check, it's for, you take it out on the month that you're insuring. So if for November, you take it out, the insurance out of November and December. Or November, the first two payments in November. Well, the state requires you to pay a month ahead. You have to pay by the twenty fourth of the previous month. So um in order to get on in line, we're going to have to have one month where employees pay two premiums. Um, we're proposing that we do this in the month of January. The main reason is January has three pay periods in it. So the hit is a lot less because you're, you would just be taking out of three paychecks in January as opposed to trying to doubling it up onto two paychecks. Um, that's the only drawback that I can see in the state plan. So I guess I'll take questions.
Any questions? Bill?
When, when would this take effect if we passed it today, January first?
January one. I I should add, too, that the that the um the sur- the surcharges are applying the first, so next year's thirty percent. Um, the following year is half of that, fifteen percent. And then the third year is zero. So and then the premiums will go dramatically down.
Mr. Metzger?
That that thirty percent, we're going to take that money, we're going to take that money out of the ARPA fund that we have left, or?
No, um, that that thirty percent is paid for by both the employees and the county, just like.
But the county's share is go, is that, where's that coming from?
It's coming from our budget.
And that's that's in this budget?
Yes, that's in this budget.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Uh, Laura?
Um, so how much is thirty percent of the this thirty percent surcharge?
The the dollar on the surcharge is not exactly thirty percent, it's a seven fifty for a family uh.
Altogether?
Yeah, seven, seven hundred and three fifty.
Together across?
Per contract, yeah.
No, how much is the dollar amount?
Seven hundred for a family, three fifty for a single, and.
No. How much is the thirty percent for all the employees? Not, not per individual or per family or per whatever.
I I don't know the exact number for all the employees. Um. Each department knows whether they're a single or family, and that's how they're inputted. Um, I'd, if I had to guess, I mean. Uh, yeah.
So, so how does, how does the employees' share of that premium compare with what they're paying now?
Okay, um, the employees right now are paying ten percent. Out of the state plan, they would pay twelve percent. Um, that that maximum contribution of eighty eight percent is by per state statute.
But as far as dollar amount, I mean.
It's going to be the about the same.
Okay.
Yeah. It's actually.
With that thirty dollar, with that thirty percent included?
Yes, it'll be a couple of dollars cheaper.
So then, then in year two, it feasibly could go down and year three down again?
Yes. Unless healthcare inflation places that, but yes.
Number?
I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. Um. I'm just going to have to give you an estimate, because I don't know how many actual contracts are.
Kenny?
In in terms of some of the numbers with this, based on seventy nine. In, in terms of some of the numbers with this, based on seventy-nine employees on the family plan and forty-eight on the single, the surcharge is seven fifty for the family plan, three hundred for the single. So the estimate of thirty percent, it's not exactly thirty percent of the premium, but the state uses thirty percent and then says, okay, that turns into seven fifty on a family, three hundred on a single. If you take seventy-nine family plans, forty-eight single plans, the thirty percent charge the first year, fifteen percent surcharge the second year, that translates into one million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars total surcharges over the two years. If we look at the offer for insurance, if we stayed self-insured versus moving to the state plans, if there wasn't a premium, we'd save about four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a year. So it's gonna take, if we could get insurance without an increase, and keep in mind, we've had substantial increases in insurance for years until we said, oh, we're looking at going to the state plan, then suddenly they said, okay, we'll give you the same rates. But if we take historical data, we're probably gonna save more like five to six hundred thousand dollars a year versus if we stayed privately insured. So it's gonna take us somewhere in two to three years using the savings by moving to the state plan to recoup that one point three million that we're going to pay in the next two years for surcharges. In regards to the employees, right now, as self-insured, they pay the full cost for the dental. And they pay ninety percent of their healthcare. When we move to the state plan, the county would be contributing to the dental and paying eighty-eight percent of their dental and eighty-eight percent of the health insurance. So by state law, we have to charge employees at least twelve percent for them. So for employees on the family plan versus their current rates, moving to the state plan would mean a one point two-nine percent increase in rates for family and single, it actually would be a decrease of point five-five percent. So for all practical purposes, employees are getting health insurance at the same rate they were. They're still getting dental, and it's, it seems like a good plan. And then somewhere in two to three years, the county recoups the investment that we move on the, on the front end. So one question I asked myself as I looked at this, I said, why do the employees basically get health insurance for the same what they're paying, but the county has a higher number for a few years? And the answer to that essentially is, we're contributing to dental now also. And so we're offsetting the employees' costs on dental, which is why their rates essentially stays the same, so it's attractive in that sense for employees. But it takes us between two and three years to recoup that cost. And what that means is, for the county's budgets, two or three years down the road, we then have freed up what's gonna be five hundred thousand or more, based on historical data on insurance increases. That gives us the capacity to provide pay raises as we, you know, prefer to be able to do with the county employees. And so it's important that we do that. The net new construction rate in Ashland County was the lowest of all seventy-two counties last year. And the ability to increase the general levy, which is used to pay for wages and benefits, being the lowest in the state, we need to make decisions that enable us to continue to give those raises and provide benefits. So by making the switch now, several years down the road, we're still in a position to give those increases on wages.
Lawrence?
I suspect that another reason for that surcharge is that the state knows they're gonna be picking up some existing claims by bringing all our employees in. So that's kind of a hedge against some ongoing claims, too.
Mr. Messinger?
Do we need a motion changing the employees' rate from ten percent to twelve percent of their insurance? Because right now, they pay ten percent, and under this new plan, it would be twelve percent. Do we need anything to?
Well, by voting for this, you are approving that, because that is the state statute. Later on, we'll have an updated handbook for, for you guys to vote on, that will have that in there.
If, if I could continue, the Executive Committee discussed this, and we thought it was a no-brainer that we'd be saving the employees' money and the county money, so we recommend that it be passed.
Yeah. Laura?
Was this all explained to the staff?
Yes, the staff understands everything.
Okay.
It took us a couple of weeks, but.
Okay, and how was it received, and did somebody from the state come and talk?
Nobody from the state came and talked. It's not something they do. I, I think there's pretty much strong approval amongst the employees. There's one department head here, Matt, I mean, how do your guys feel about it?
We need a man to mic, yeah.
So yeah, I, we went over this extensively with our crew. I didn't get any negative comments, you know, there's some, some stuff we don't totally understand. Hopefully, it's, it's, it's not all perfectly clear, but overall, I, I think it, it looks good. What we can see, it, it looks like it'll be a better, better deal.
I know HHS are happy. I know most, most of the courthouse, actually, the one or two opposition has been dropped, so the courthouse is on board. Main Conservation's on board, Forestry is.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Kenny?
Changing insurance is always hard because you gotta read stuff and figure it out. Even if we stayed privately insured, there's no guarantee that we would still have the same plan going forward, because we might have to change to something else for a variety of reasons. One of the things I think is nice about the state plan is, you're gonna have that stability of a plan that, in all likelihood, is gonna be more consistent. And once you've learned that, you know, you're not gonna run that risk of changing insurance companies. But employees can also stay on the state plan when they leave Ashland County if they want to. They'd pay the premium, the full premium, but that's an option that they would have, whereas with private insurance, that's not an option.
Laura?
I forgot what I was gonna ask. Oh, the doctors. Everybody is going to be able to keep their doctors and their medications and things like that?
Yes. They use the First Health Network for this area, and that's actually what we currently have.
Okay.
Okay, no other questions?
There's one question. Do they know about the double payment in January or one of those months? And how was that received?
No, that issue just came up, because we were talking about moving the dispatchers over to Bayfield County, December first. And it literally just came up in the last week. So dispatchers are gonna have to do a double payment, too, when they move in December. But there'll be Bayfield County employees, though.
And this has nothing to do with that, does it? Because that sounds like an executive committee decision when that gets pulled?
The Executive Committee can decide it, or you can make it as part of the motion to approve this.
It doesn't seem to be listed in here, so.
Yeah.
It would, I don't know about anybody else, but it would seem to be an executive committee decision then, because they do contracts?
Okay. No other questions? Okay, we have the motion and a second for approving the resolution, approved switching from self-funded healthcare to the state plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Motion carried. Resolution R ten, twenty twenty-four, fourteen ninety-one, resolution allocating American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds.
So we are required to allocate the, the balance of our ARPA funds by the end of this year. And then it has to be spent by the end of twenty-six. We know we're gonna have costs, well, roughly, we're gonna have about four hundred thousand dollars left after the elevator repair is done. Which I think will be starting soon. So we have to allocate that money. So because we received less than ten million dollars, we can allocate all of our money to lost tax revenue. And we certainly lost tax revenue and during COVID, I'm in sales tax. We also know that we're gonna, in the, as we switch health insurance, we have to pay off, we're gonna have to pay off some claims from this year. And we have to buy an insurance and stuff. And so we may need this money for the ARPA funding for that. So, so I'm asking you to allocate it to lost tax revenue, and that Finance Committee decide how it gets spent over the next two years.
Is there a motion? Mr. Kenny?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Kenny, Mr. Stender?
Ron Stender will second.
Ron seconds it. Questions? Laura?
Is there any intention with this, or some plan that's gonna be made up? I mean, I know there's the health insurance claims that we'll have to trickle out the payoffs for, but.
Yeah.
The original, excuse me, the original intention of some of this ARPA stuff was to help keep businesses going, things like that, community projects. Because when I was down at County's Association, a lot of their innovative projects had to do with them actually taking some of the ARPA and putting it into community projects. And we've, we, I, I realize we came from a spot where we hadn't had a lot of plans, and we kind of got ourselves in trouble. And we have been using it to kind of bail ourselves out with certain things. But with this last little bit, is there going to be some intention of helping out in the community?
Well, I will say with the, the, the previous uses of ARPA funding were, one, you gave hazard pay to employees. Two, we fixed this building, saving taxpayers the million dollars on the tax levy it would have taken. You know, we're using that money to fix the elevator, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I wouldn't say we used it because of any financial troubles, we used it as a way to defray taxing our people and use it more responsibly. Yeah, Finance Committee will have ideas of how to use this the best way.
Question?
Mr. Pusay?
Yeah, do we know that the lost tax revenue exceeds the amount of this?
It, it does, I mean, because taxes were down for a year, for over a year. And we get two million a year just in sales tax.
Other questions?
Last question, is the county board in general going to be able to have some input on what these funds are used for?
Yeah, yeah. Every, every county board members can talk to the Finance Committee or myself, or the chair, about how they think they should be used.
Who was it? Dick?
Yeah, damn, after the elevator expenses taken care of, how much money we're gonna have left?
A little less than four hundred thousand dollars.
Four hundred thousand?
Yeah, three fifty to four hundred.
I think I brought it up to you before, a couple of times, about the possibility of getting some county help for the new boat landing down in the area where they rid of the pollution.
Are you talking about the Crayer Park Landing? Pardon? The Crayer Park Landing, are you talking about?
No.
Okay, because I was gonna say the state just funded them.
Yeah, no, the other, the other one maybe for bigger boats. And, and the idea of that is, it's an economic development tool. The bigger boats are super, super expensive. The people that are coming up here with them boats have got some money. This is gonna help the motel trade, restaurant trade, just gonna bring more money into town. And not only that, but at one point in time, they had races with those big boats. That's really interesting. I just wonder if we could consider taking some of that ARPA money and and putting it in the fund for the boat landing.
Well, I think the Finance Committee heard, just heard your request, so.
Mr. Kenny?
As I talked with the, as I talked to the administrator about the transition on healthcare, we have to pay the, what they call the runout for the existing plan, meaning claims that come in or the self-insurance we have through the end of the year. And then we also have these buy-in costs to get into the state plan. So there's this window of time where we need to cover both, if you will. And that makes it challenging for local units of government to make this transition, but we're doing it because in the long run, financially, we're gonna be in a much better place. So one of the discussions the administrator and I have had is, as we make this transition and we look at what we have in reserves and savings, general fund contingency, et cetera, you know, we had to consider, is this workable? And the answer right now is, it's workable, we can do this. It is a big commitment in our capacity to do things for a period of time, but it's, it's a very good investment, both for the county taxpayers, because we'll be saving on insurance, which ultimately helps the taxpayers. It'll be a more attractive place for the counties to work, you know, for employees to work here. And so there's this need to have some reserves as we build that. And so to the extent that we can, I think finance for a while is gonna be looking at this transition and working on building those reserves. We have a grant writer now, so one question I've asked the administrator is, if we find some projects that are attractive and we need to come up with some money, where does that come from? One possibility is ARPA, another, is there some money in contingency? So if there are some attractive projects that the board is interested in, you know, in particular related to housing or something like that, there is some money available for that. And the way I think of that ARPA money in some ways, it gives us the capacity to make the transition on healthcare. But it also is giving us the capacity to have a grant writer, and right now, the number one topic that the county's been looking at is housing, which is good for the county in many ways, including building tax base, making it a more attractive place for people to live and work, which helps our employees. So there is that capacity to do that, but I think on finance, we're not looking for somewhere to spend the money. We're trying to build reserves unless there's something really attractive that is a real positive for the county. But there is ability to do something that, if there's something that comes forward.
Thank you. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second for resolution R ten.
I'm sorry, it was, it's again.
Go ahead, Liz.
Is there any way that we can dedicate some money to the AADC? Because that builds a small business incubator in our community. And that in the long run is a tax base. So I would like to see us try to give some money to AADC. Thank you, and the housing.
Thank you, Liz. Other, any other questions? Again, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution R ten, twenty-four, fourteen ninety-one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. H, adoption of the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five budget and tax levy. Is there a motion? Mr. Pusay?
So move, to adopt.
Mr. Pusay makes a motion, is there a second?
This is paddle second.
Mr. Kenny seconds. Questions? So we have a motion. Motion, oh, yes.
I'm, after hearing our presentation earlier today, I think we should put the fifty thousand dollars back in for AADC.
And where would you pay, how would you pay for it?
The ARPA funds, except we've got in contingency.
Mr. Messinger?
I agree with, with Mr. Stark. And I don't know if this is time for questions, but I had a question for Carver. And when he gave his presentation.
Well, wait, wait one second, Bill.
Oh.
There's a motion on the floor. There has to be a second. Was, oh, Pat, I'm sorry, I apologize. Thank you. Go ahead, Bill, sorry.
So I, I guess, I don't know if this is time for questions, but I had a, I had an additional question for Carver that I couldn't ask when he gave his presentation. Is there any other agencies that support you financially? Carver? And can?
We need a microphone then?
Can Carver speak at this time? Can Carver speak at this time?
If.
I'll make the motion that the director of the AADC be able to answer these questions.
Okay, motion by Laura.
I'll second that.
Second by Ron. All those in favor allowing to speak, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carry, thank you.
Would you come up to the microphone, please?
Uh, the city of Ashland, uh, funded us last year or this current year at fifty-five thousand dollars. And, um, it looks like they're going to be increasing that by three percent in twenty twenty-five. That is the only government organization that is providing funding to us. For our programs.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Laura?
Um, Carver, when you get these funds from the city or the county, what costs do these usually go for?
So they're not con- considered restricted funds, they go into our operating budget. So this helps me hire staff. This helps me, um, uh, provide matching funds for grants. Um, there are some grants that we receive that allow for administrative costs, which means that a certain percentage of that will go to reimburse us before some of our expenses. But there are also what we call pass-through grants. So for instance, a grant that I am applying for and I'm waiting to hear about right now, it's a pass-through grant. It would, uh, provide two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for me to start a, um, a program that helps young people start construction-related businesses in Ashland County. But it's entirely a pass-through grant, so that two hundred and fifty thousand that comes to me can't stay with me, it goes out. In addition to that, I'm required to commit to providing technical assistance, which means I have to provide the staff. The grant can't pay for that. I don't have the staff to do that, I would have to hire somebody. I'm not able to do that, I can't accept that money to start this program, which would be a phenomenal program for us to have in Ashland County. That's just an example, and I don't even know if I'm gonna get that grant, but this is how some of the grants work. They're all very different in how much money I have to put up ahead or get reimbursed for after I put the money out. Clarence?
What's the total amount of your budget?
Well, the last two years aren't a very good indication of that, because the, um, the grant that we got from the DOA, which is actually ARPA money, um, that grant was, uh, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, right? So it looks like last year we got a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in, um, or, uh, um, one point eight nine, excuse me, million dollars in, but we're spending it, a lot of it this year. So it looks like we're, we're going under, we're in the red this year, but it's because we got so much money the year before. Um, typically, we're around three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, sometimes less, sometimes more. It really does depend a lot on what the city and the county can, can help us, what, what they, what they can afford to do with all of the demands that they have on their budgets. And then how good am I as a grant writer? A lot of it depends on that.
Laura?
Carver, if you don't get this fifty thousand dollars, um, what is it going to do to your operations?
I would love to give you a really black and white answer. But I don't, I don't know that yet. I know it's going to affect it somehow. So for instance, we've tried to expand into the rural part of the county. We've opened up, uh, an office in Butternut, uh, and try to have a presence down there. We're starting small, we're down there once or twice a month, right? That costs more money to do that. Um, we're trying to have more of a presence on Madeline Island. It costs a lot more money to send staff over there, they have to go for the, you know, the entire day, there's the ferry costs, the cost of travel and so on. So if I, if I don't get this money, I'm going to have to cut down, back programming. Uh, but I'm gonna have to be pretty thoughtful about how to do that. I'm sorry, that's not a black and white answer, but I, I'm just not sure yet.
It shows that this does make a difference for the county as a whole. Um, and your last example with that youth grant. If, if you don't have the capability to be able to offer technical assistance, the grant does not cover it.
Correct.
And there is quite a few grants that do not cover the staffing for it. It's kind of like some of the unfunded mandates we get at the county level. They'll give us the money to do the programming, but they're not gonna give us a bunch of staff costs for it. So it makes providing services more difficult.
Correct. So another example would be, I just got notified last week that, um, we've been awarded a grant from the Department of Veteran Affairs for a program that we've run three times in the past, this would be the fourth time, I'm sorry, I always have my back to somebody. I apologize for that. We've run this particular program, it's called Ready Vet Grow, three times. They have given me the grant award that I, um, requested, but they only gave me thirty percent of the money. How do I hire somebody now without either taking money away from the entrepreneurs? Because the money, most of the money is supposed to be going to help them buy trade equipment to launch or expand their businesses. Right? But now how do I hire somebody to run the program? And I don't want to turn that money back either. So I've got to be either very creative or get more grants or, and every time that I, that I spend, having to spend more money going out there and finding donors or grants is less time that I'm working with those entrepreneurs.
Yeah, I had you send me some numbers of what kind of effects you've had in our county. Um, you've, just through, from January twenty twenty-three to July twenty twenty-four, you assisted three hundred and twenty-six businesses. Um, you helped with eleven grants for down payments, which helped maybe vacant buildings or things be used, which helps our tax base. Um, you helped with the, the technical assistance, there's professional services, grants and, and such. Um, which is, although it says twenty-four grants, there's, there's twenty-three thousand dollars that was in that part. Because again, a lot of these grants don't provide for the people to do the programs, the programs. But, uh, you know, you have brought in over two million dollars into the county to help develop businesses. And I know a couple of businesses down in the southern part of the county that you have helped with recently that have kept small businesses running or helped a business not be vacant or not sold, uh, to somebody. I don't know, it, it just, the service that you provide is, is invaluable. Because those dollars that you help bring into the county, what is it, the status for every dollar spent, seven dollars comes back. So you multiply what you get. Um, I am very in support of this, if you don't get it by now. Um, these small businesses are the ones that stick around. Yes, we can build hosing, and yes, we need hosing, but if we don't help some entrepreneurs come in, they're, they're stable, they're solid, they invest in our communities, they donate their time to our other nonprofits. They help, they help do the fundraisers and things for, for some of our nonprofits. These are people who are invested in the community because they want to make a business here. So these small businesses that are, are nurtured by your program are very near and dear to my heart. Um, part of my degree is all about small businesses and that economic development, so. Lots of words and lots of data, but I, I really want to see that fifty thousand dollars left in.
Mr. Messinger?
I would like to make a motion to amend the budget and add fifty thousand dollars restored to this.
It's already done. There.
Oh, we already done it, okay, sorry, I did second it, thanks.
Okay, and before we go, I just, I don't want to be negative or positive on this, but I just caution folks on this budget. Because if you adds money back in, you're gonna have to figure out where it's coming from. And, and having heard presentations already from the school and not knowing where the county's budget's gonna be, and then your local, or your city or village or town, uh, you're gonna have to be aware of the tax impacts and, and so on the taxpayers. Um, so, a- and that being said, the board gets to make that decision. Mr. Kenny?
The ADC is in what was the Larson Picture Frame Building. If you go back to nineteen ninety-four, the city of Ashland entered an agreement to fund half of a feasibility study to turn that into an incubator. The idea of an incubator is you start businesses and move them out. The ADC then later changed that to an enterprise center. An enterprise center, their goal is to rent the space out and keep it full. It's not necessarily start businesses and move them out. So local, state and federal tax dollars went into that building, and in today's dollars, that's well over a million dollars that went into that building for that renovation to try to put it to good use, and that part's fine. What seems to be forgotten is the intent of the city and the county by making contributions to renovating that building and providing funding for a period of time, is that the rental income from that building would then sustain the ADC's operations in that building. I've looked at your nine nineties, your tax returns, they're public information, you have been building your balance, balance sheet, which is good. You know, that's good to see. Um, clearly, you can function without our fifty thousand dollars. Um, and that's good to see, that's the way this is supposed to be. Back in twenty eleven, on one of your newsletters, you had a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in rental income from that building. The previous director had said that he spends about half his time dealing with the building and tenants, et cetera. So we have to bear in mind that the ADC is about, you know, half landlord time, half something else. When I look at research on economic development, typically, there's about one person in economic development for every fifteen thousand people. That would mean one person for Ashland County, which is about sixteen thousand people. So the staffing level you have, you know, reflects the funding that you're able to get, you know, which is fine, if you can find funding, that's, you know, that's good. But it's above what is the norm. The two point one million that you received as ARPA funding, American Rescue Plan Act funding, those are our federal tax dollars. And you're being paid administrative fees and costs through those dollars. In the email that you had sent out, you seem to suggest that the county is getting that service for the hundred thousand we have given the last two years. You're getting paid with our federal tax dollars on that. To suggest that you're doing that based on our county tax dollars, I find is disingenuous. And then the city has given you over a hundred thousand dollars in the last two years too. In other words, there's three groups of taxpayers funding that activity that you speak to. Um, so it's ARPA dollars that are paying for that. My question is, what are we getting for the money we gave you? And I haven't seen anything on what we're actually getting from our contributions. You just say, we got two point one million, but that's federal dollars, that's a different pot of money. But the bottom line is, you guys really need to sustain yourself, um, and go forward. And also in the email you sent out, you're saying the county isn't doing on anything in economic development. I mean, honestly, I'm really offended by that. Um, there's a disconnect here. We are investing in the county. Um, we're working on a broadband initiative, we're working on solar, increasing solar panels in various locations here. We maintain our roads, and trust me, our highway commissioner knows, I've asked a lot of questions on the highway, the equipment. We take care of our roads, we take care of the equipment, we're getting as much value out of them as we can, as we should. Because that's how you get the most bang for the buck. So these things that the county is doing with housing, a high initiative now, we're working on this as a better place to live and work. In the municipality magazine about a decade ago, there was a front page article on if you make a place a place that's good to live and work, the entrepreneurs will come and they'll figure out a way to start those businesses and make things work. So the county is working on doing things that are big picture things to make this a better place, um, to live and work. But these comments earlier today where you said rise out of the current financial situation, um, you know, and it just, it rubs me wrong, because it feels like we're getting beaten down and then the ADC is supposed to be the answer. I started learning about the ADC in twenty ten when I was in the city council. I don't find the ADC to be the answer here. I think the ADC needs to stand on its own two feet. You've got that building, taxpayers, local, state and federal have renovated that for you. It's supposed to sustain your operations to provide those services. And if it can't sustain your operations, I really suggest that you talk to Northwest Regional Planning, have them take the building over to make it an enterprise center, so you can move out and work somewhere else and focus only on economic development. Because if you're coming to us and asking for money, you haven't been successful in sustaining operations that are after all of those investments. So it's good that you're getting money, but I think that you're only doing what was expected after all of these investments. And to keep asking us for money when you tell us that we need to rise out of our current financial situation, we need to have enough fiscal self-discipline to build our balance sheet and focus on those bigger picture things that others aren't going to be able to provide, either the private sector or the ADC. What you're doing has value, that's why local government has invested in you, the state and the federal has. But it's really time that you stand on your own two feet and not ask us to continue to provide that level of assistance that we've been doing after all these years of investment.
Sure.
Well, I have a bunch of questions after that. So is this going to be applied to every single business and entity that we put that, that comes to us for some kind of assistance? So everybody has to be able to stand on their own two feet to do the services that are not provided for directly by our government. Um, we support trails around here, we support groomers of trails, we support aging programs, we support, um, busing in our cities. Um, there is a misconception here about a nonprofit, because those dollars that get given to a nonprofit are leveraged for more money. The chamber does it, the aging unit does it, Bart does it, I, I just, the trails, the, the, our trail system uses it. But for some reason, this is what the issue is, this, this is making small businesses stay here, people who come here and move here to make our communities better. Having assistance to help them do it, not just, hey, by the way, you're an entrepreneur, figure it out. So, you know, in the letter that was sent, one of the things that was sent out to us, there was an, and ah, where are we? There was supposed to be some long-term tenants inside that building. Here's the thing, does anybody knock the enrichment center for having a bargain hut? Is, is there any big deal about that? No, they're trying to use what they have to help support those programs. Right now, some of the rental stuff helps cover some of those costs. It helps support the building, helps keep repairs and things and stuff like that. But you can't just have one stream of income. The chamber has stuff that comes in from the city and from the county and from our tax revenue. Because you leverage all of that in order to get more grants, to provide more services. Because nobody comes along and says, hey, we'll just do like the school did, and we'll just tax people, and, and then we'll pay for our services. In order to be at a nonprofit, you have to be scrappy, you have to be resilient, and you definitely have to be very creative when it comes to supporting staff and services. The, this, it's, it's not the same thing. You can't look at a county service and try to transfer it on to a nonprofit. There is a fundamental misunderstanding of what nonprofits are right here. We, as a county, with our economic development piece, and I said this when I was on the finance committee, we are supposed to make investments that help bring more people, services, things inside this county. And, and then we're supposed to help them. We didn't do that with our, a lot of our ARPA money. You, the thing is, is it's not a finance committee thing that our county has been in a bad position. We are the second poorest county in this state. You know who does a lot of the work? Well, our big three, of course, our highway, our, our health and human services and our policing. Well, our big three, of course, our highway, our Health and Human Services, and our policing. But it's all the little nonprofits that do all these other services that helps the county be able to magnify the dollars that we get from the public and make it a bigger thing. We cannot bank on if you build a house, they will come. If we do not have, if we do not have a whole community that supports the fact that small businesses help bring in more money to this county. They take up those small buildings that are empty and they make them more. You know, I know the Chamber helps do some of that, too. You got some little grants and things that helps with that. It's all a whole bunch of pieces. The basic, the basic economic, like a very simplified one oh one for economic development is somebody needs three things in your community within a certain mileage of each other in order to come in and spend money. So, this fifty thousand dollars that seems to be going to tip our budget totally over on its head gets magnified by the services of our nonprofits. And Carver has shown with the numbers and the reach to other parts of the county that this is something that is taken seriously, is the AADC is dedicated to this, and that they're good at it. It may or may not be exactly what any one of us would decide, you need to do this with your money. But those are the things that we have to look at, the numbers, the data, and trust that that's what's going on. And then they come back the next year and they show us again. The island's been affected. Butternuts had some stuff expanding down into those smaller parts of our county to help them have more economic development is a good thing. Soapbox done, but this isn't huge, and this gets magnified. This is us being part of economic development.
There has been local, state, and federal dollars to set them up so they have an income from that building. Again, a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in twenty-eleven. Part of the issue is transparency and getting information from them. So, they've been set up so they have money coming in. If you size them for the average number of employees per fifteen thousand, they'd have one person. That's what, on average, there is in other places. And so, you're asking Ashland County taxpayers to fund an organization beyond what other places do on average. And then the county board, executive committee, finance, and the board all unanimously supported hiring a grant writer as a first step in building an office to write grants, administer them, and work on projects that have positive implications for economic development. So, some of the things that are in the county's best interest, in particular, increasing the tax base, because right now, we have the lowest tax, you know, levy limits increase in the state. We need to build that tax base as part of changing our financial situation. And so, you know, housing is related to that. So, you know, one person in the ADC, they've got the income. They've been set up to do that. We need to invest in ourselves to do projects that are in the county's best interests. And we can only raise taxes so much. You know that. And so, to say we need to hand money out for things that are not mandated, we have limits on what we can do. So, yes, we have to make some decisions. And so, we have invested in there. So is the city. And if they can't sustain themselves at this point with that income, then it's time for either them and/or the county to change directions. And the county has changed direction by hiring a grant writer. And we need to fund that office and work with that grant writer to develop projects that support economic development and are in the best interests of the county. So, if we're going to be told by the people we've been working with for thirty-plus years to rise out of our current financial situation, if that's how they describe us after we hire them for thirty years, I say, by God, it's time to change horses and do something different. I really do.
This is an interesting discussion, but I think I would like to call the question.
Microphones, please.
Second to call the question.
My fault. Sorry, Laurie. Okay, there is a motion by Marty Vitek, seconded by George Basida called a question.
Mr. Stark, it means end debate. It's non-debatable.
I would like to see the.
Mr. Stark, you can't talk. You can't debate it.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Just point of clarification, we're calling on that we're gonna spend fifty thousand more, but we're not taking it away from anything. Is that what the question was?
No, we're calling the question on whether to end debate or not.
Okay, that's first. Yeah.
Okay, roll call.
I rescind my roll call on that piece.
Ader.
Yes.
Mindell. Murdick.
Yes.
Ellifson.
Yes.
Trudeau.
Yes.
Negro.
No.
Metzener. Campbell.
Yes.
Ray.
No.
Kinney. Whoofal. Brannick.
No.
Stark.
Yes.
Stendor. Reamer.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Vitek. Huber. Schultz.
Yes.
Sixteen yes, four no.
Okay, now, now we're going to move to the amendment. There's an amendment.
There's no, there's no, there's no convert debate on this item either since the question was called. So, it's an up or down vote on adding fifty thousand dollars to, for the ADC out of contingency.
It can be a roll call vote, please.
Yeah.
Can we amend that? No, I know.
No, we can't. The question's been called.
But the question would.
The motion Mr. Stark made was to add fifty thousand dollars for the ADC out of contingency. So, so a yes, a yes is yes at take contingency money to give ADC, and no is to.
No.
Do not.
Request a roll call vote.
And a roll call vote has been requested by several members.
Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote on the motion to amend adding fifty thousand back into the budget.
Mindell.
Here, yes.
Murdick.
No.
Ellifson. Trudeau.
No.
Negro.
Yes.
Metzener.
Yes.
Campbell.
No.
Ray.
No.
Kinney. Whoofal. Brannick.
Yeah.
Stark.
Yes.
Stendor.
Yes.
Reamer.
No.
Hussein.
No.
Anderson. Vitek.
Yes.
Huber. Schultz.
Yes.
Ader.
Yes.
It's a tie. Ten ten.
The motion fails.
Motion fails. So, now we're back to the adoption of the twenty twenty-five budget and tax levy. Mr. Kenny? I'll call a question.
Second.
There's a second by George. Mr. Kenny made the motion. Mr. Basie called, or seconded called a question.
So, no, just see, no, you're calling the question on further debate on the budget is what the motion is. This is a non-debatable motion, so roll call is.
So, there's no other discussion on any other parts of the.
No, the question's been called and seconded. So.
Okay, roll call on calling the question.
Murdick.
Yes.
Ellifson.
Yes.
Trudeau.
Yes.
Negro.
No.
Please remember to use your microphone. Sorry.
Metzener.
No.
Campbell.
No.
Ray.
Yes.
Kinney.
Yes.
Whoofal.
No.
Brannick.
No.
Stark.
No.
Stendor.
No.
Reamer.
No.
Hussein.
Yes.
Anderson. Vitek.
Yes.
Huber.
Yes.
Schultz.
No.
Ader.
Yes.
Mindell.
No.
Nine yes, eleven no.
Microphone, please, Gary.
I'm sorry. Okay, so we're back to the adoption of the twenty-five budget tax levy questions. Mr. Messinger.
The way the budget is presented right now, there's a zero percent increase for Ashland County. Is that correct? Correct.
Yeah, taxes are only by net new construction.
That is not my question. My question is, has, what has the levy done? Has it changed or is it the same as last year? How, what percent is it up?
Dan, please use your microphone.
Points, it's like point six nine percent. Which is the value of net new construction.
Microphone, please.
Bill?
If we would have added fifty thousand dollars to the budget, what percent would have that been upraised? Would have it been like point ten percent or point zero nine?
I, I'm not so sure, Bill. That issue is over.
I know, but this is a question. That's, that's what the budget is for, to discuss it. It's not locked in.
But it's not in the budget.
I know, but it's a question. It's a question about the budget.
Dan, do you want me to respond? Because.
Yes, please, Steve.
Okay, so currently, the county is at their max levy ability for this year with the state imposed levy limits. So, you can't increase your levy. So, if you wish to add in something to the budget, you would have to provide an equal amount of a reduction somewhere else or new revenue or some way to pay for it within the budget because the county could not increase its levy.
Microphone, please.
Mr. Stark?
How much is in the contingency fund that wouldn't have to be added to the budget if we had an expense?
There is currently three hundred thousand in your contingency fund.
Thank you.
Which is twenty-five percent less than last year.
Yes, it is less than last year, correct.
Okay. Laura?
How's the debt levy look? Did that go up?
No, debt levy was pretty static.
Kind of would have been important information to let us know about what our levy limit was and what our budget looked like.
That's, that's in the sheet in front of you.
Yeah, I know, but this is the place where we're supposed to discuss all that stuff, too. So, there needs to be more education here.
This is Liz Bittfrannick. You won't add anything?
Go ahead, Liz.
You know, just like the comments that our former board supervisors had stated, you know, we need to be more transparent to the public for, you know, what we're going for. A lot of people complain that these meetings are at nine in the morning. I tell them, well, they have to reach out to their county board supervisors. People are busy. People don't want to, you know, they're afraid to speak up or whatever. Maybe going forward in the future, if we could have these important meetings vote on, you know, during the night or, you know, a time that the public can weigh in more, maybe just like a public hearing just for that topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, George?
I'd like to add in that, you know, the details of the meeting packet and a detailed packet of the explanation of the budget is online. It's incumbent upon all of us to review these things before we come to a meeting and ask our questions probably before we get here.
Thank you, George. Any other questions? So, I believe we're back to the adoption of the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five budget and tax levy. Is there a motion? I think there was. Okay, so we, we have a motion in a second. Roll call vote?
Ellifson.
Yes.
Trudeau.
Yes.
Negro.
Nope.
Metzener.
No.
Campbell.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Kinney.
Yes.
Whoofal. Brannick.
No.
Stark. Stendor.
No.
Reamer.
Yes.
Hussein.
Yes.
Anderson. Vitek.
Yes.
Huber. Schultz.
Yes.
Ader.
Yes.
Mindell.
Yes.
Murdick.
Yes.
Fifteen yes, five no.
Thank you. Item I, approved bid for Space Needs Study.
So, we got, when we put it out, the Space Needs Study after bid, and that money was approved for this year's, in this, for the budget for this year last fall. We got two responses. They both went to PPLA and Finance Committee. This is the one that was recommended. The price is about thirty thousand less than the other option. It cost about thirty-eight thousand, I believe, is the number, almost thirty-nine.
Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Basie?
Move to approve.
Motion by George, second.
I'll second.
Second by Clarence Campbell. Discussion. Bill?
I was talking to the grant writer at the beginning, before the meeting started, and she said there's a possible grant for this study. And I guess I would like to see, before the county commits the money, to see if we qualify for this grant. And, you know, maybe I could have her speak and see what she says. Because I can't see spending forty thousand dollars if, if, if it, we can get it a lot cheaper. And as far as I know, this is supposed to be covering all the county employees.
All the county, all the county buildings.
Yeah, so, you know, I just think, I think we should see if we can get the grant.
Clarence?
Didn't you say that we approved this though in this year, current year's budget?
Yeah, we approved it last.
Money's there.
Approved it last November.
Yeah, the money's there. And if we get the grant, it's just extra. I mean, it's icing on the cake.
Laura?
The company also may have access to some grants. A lot of them will help fund their price and also the projects that they present to us as, as solutions.
Okay. Any other questions? There's a motion in a second to approve the bid for Space, Space Study Needs. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Approval of the post office lease in Hybridge. Is there a motion? Dick?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dick Poofall, second. Marty? Marty Vtech, seconds, questions? All, all those in favor of approving a post office lease in Hybridge, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Resolution R ten, twenty twenty four, fourteen ninety two, resolution opposing HR nine one one one. Is there a motion?
George?
Move to approve the resolution.
Sec, Laura?
Marty can have it.
Oh.
I'll second it.
Second, second by Marty. Questions? Clarence?
I'd just like to, I'm, I'm in favor of this, but I'd like to point out a couple of things on here that I noticed. Couple of wording changes or corrections. Um, if you look at the seventh one down on the first page or the third one up from the bottom, I guess. Uh, currently, the US Forest Service does not have the funding to keep the David R. Obi visitor center open seven days a week nor allow the space to be used as meeting space, not a meeting space. And then, uh, second one on page two. Areas that would be most affected by more tourists already should be have instead of has. And then I'd, I'd just like to make a couple of recommendations. Now, I'll, I'll put this in the form of a motion, but, um, I understand the reasoning for the, the last one on page one, the reasoning for pointing out that Representative Tiffany, who proposed this, uh, resolution in Congress is the chair of the Subcommittee on Federal Lands. But, and not, not that I expect this to happen, but there's a chance that if he loses the election, he won't be the chair of that subcommittee. Um, and even if he does win, uh, he might not be the chair next session. And then in the, about the middle of page two, there's a comment made. It says the current legis, national, national H R designation adequately and appropriately protects the nat, natural, cultural and historical resources while allowing for public use and enjoyment. And then that's sentence, the proposal is a solution in search of a problem. I don't think that's really necessary to put in there. Um, so I'm gonna make a motion that we amend this resolution to correct the, uh, word in the third one from the bottom, changing a to as. In the bottom of page one, I would change that second sentence to read. We recommend that the House of Representatives Subcommittee on Federal Lands addresses the deferred maintenance backlog on the property instead. And then on page two, uh, correct, in the second one on page two, correct, has to have. And then on that one in the middle of the page, just delete that line, the proposal is a solution in search of a problem. I would, I would make a motion that we amend this resolution to make those changes.
Second.
Second. Motion by Clarence, second by George Basay on making changes. Any questions on the changes? All those in favor of making those changes, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried.
Ray abstain.
Okay, so now we're back to the resolution. Resolution opposing HR nine one 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 with the recommended changes. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstain.
Ray abstain.
Murdick abstains. Thank you. Okay, sorry. Appointment of Supervisor George Basay to the ADRC Board. Is there a motion? Mr. Messinger?
I move for adoption.
Clarence?
I'll second.
Second by Clarence. Questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Administrator updates?
Um, I, I tell you, I don't have much of all, because all I've been working on is healthcare and the budget. So now that we're done with that, we'll move on to other things.
Okay, any county board supervisor updates? Mr. Basay?
Uh, I just wanna update on my opinion about the AADC. I, I, I do think it's appropriate for the, the Finance Committee to retake that up and consider if there's a way to pay for it, because it seems like a good idea if we could pay for it.
Mr. Kenny?
Probably most of you know I'm Chair of Finance right now. Um, it is, um, challenging to work through a budget. Fill our mandates, decide what else we can reasonably do and invest in when we have in this year, last year, the lowest net new construction rate in the state, zero point five eight percent. It just means that we can't collect money and fund all of the things that we want to. And that means we can't say yes to everything that we would like to say yes to. That's just a simple reality. Um, I think the administration or administrator, our staff, our consultants, Mike and Steve, um, and people on this board who have put thought and time and effort into these decisions. I, I think our staff and Mike and Steve deserve a lot of credit this year for working through the budget to get us to the point that we got to. Um, and then I also, um, the answer to the question, how much would that fifty thousand impact our budget? If you look at the allowable levy limit that we have, that would add zero point five five percent, um, to our taxes if that went on the tax rolls this year. So just a tad over a half a percent. And we know the Vaughn Library referendum passed as four point three million. We know the Melon and Butternut schools have challenges on maintaining their funding. And so taxpayers, you know, want us to do our best on making these hard decisions, and some of these hard are hard. But I wanna look forward to, to next year, um, to remind the board that, starting in January, the comprehensive plan update is scheduled to start, and the board about a year ago changed that to a standing committee instead of an ad hoc committee. An ad hoc committee would do its work and disband. We changed it to a standing committee so that that committee can continue to look updating, at updating our comprehensive plan going forward. And a really important part of that plan is gonna tie to economic development. It's one reason we hired a grant writer. We wanna build out that office. So if you have topics related to economic development, think about those topics and what it would take to make them come forward in terms of resources, manpower, um, community support, et cetera. Because a comprehensive plan committee, as they work on that, and I volunteered for it because I think it's an important thing to do as far as our future, is that we can then take these things that are important to people throughout the county and work at finding ways, um, to bring those things forward. So we're changing some gears or focus, if you will, on what we have been doing, and it's gonna be several years in the process as we, you know, add to that grant writing office and look at doing new things and things in a different way, but that comp plan is gonna be a really important part of it. So if you make a list of things of interest, send it to me, send it to the administrator, and then we can start thinking about those things, not just with the comp plan, but with the budget going forward. Um, I wish there was more money. There isn't. Um, so we live within the rules we have, and, and some of these decisions I know are, are, are just plain hard.
Mr. Vtech?
Uh, what, what, what Pat is saying, I, I can't argue with that, but it strikes me as, as a pretty abrupt change to just zero out the development corporation. I think we should work to find some accommodation to ease the transit.
Mr. Reed?
This is a different subject, but I'm speaking for the guys on this end of the wall. All the school districts in this county are really hurting, and I don't know why we had to have a big spiel from the Ashland one. I know three quarters of us, you guys are all part of it, but it really didn't have anything to do with us on this end. And our school districts are hurting a lot more than Ashland. So it was just like a waste of time for us on this end. So hopefully in the future, you guys care about this quarter over here, because we got feelings, dude.
Well, and, and certainly the chair recognizes that situation.
I think.
I'm in the midst of that.
I think Rob probably came to us to ask to speak. I know he's been going out.
Yeah.
To different groups and asking to speak, so.
Yeah.
And, and I mean, it was, we, we didn't approach him. He approached us.
Yeah, no, but if the Mellon School District, you know, they wanted to come and give a presentation, they could too.
It's only a week away. Okay, um.
Liz with Frannick again. Can I ask a question or comment?
Sure.
Um, where are we with our opiate funding? And do we have any allocation for them fund, that funding? I'd like the Finance Committee to look at that when they, we get that and to pour money into anti-drug programs, um, like the, the sober living, um, maybe homeless prevention. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Uh, Liz, I know, um, Erica's working on another grant for sober living specifically, um, which would be state opiate funding. Uh, right now, our current opiate funding, we have about a hundred thousand, hundred and fifteen thousand in the bank from previous payments. Uh, HHS is gonna, is gonna start working with Bayfield County to see if we can't get more bang for our buck with the money and help out more people. So that's kind of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And probably get some more, um, money for boots on the ground for, um, drug enforcement. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, seeing nothing. I need to, oh, yep.
Um, I would just like to say that, um, the city of Mellon and Meals on Wheels are having trouble with their contract to fulfill their contracts. I just wanna have the board aware of that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Look. Does anybody want any information on it? Because it has nothing to do with my agency. It has to do with state stuff. I can't control them.
Well, it has to do with what, Laura?
State, the, the state and what they say we can use our grant funding for and the equipment and such, so.
Okay.
It's, it's basically between the state and I have to do things, so.
Okay, good. And, and have you talked to the mayor?
I have talked to the mayor multiple times. Um, now we have it in writing, because we do it by email and, and to other people. So I, I don't know how much more blatantly communicative I can be unless I.
Okay.
Go and live with him.
Yeah, uh, okay, thank you, because I've gotten a call, so that, thank you, Laura. Okay, so do we need a motion to adjourn?
Point of order.
Oh, George?
I think we need to close the, uh, public comment period.
Oh, you're correct, George. Thank you.
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing on the budget.
Sir, second? Okay, Clarence made the motion. Marty has a second to close the public portion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Motion carried. Thank you, George. Now we need a motion. Oh.
It's, it's on the, uh, agenda that we schedule a meeting date or no?
For the next one?
No, okay.
Sometime in March.
Yeah, I don't anticipate needing a meeting in next month.
Yeah.
Or even December.
The chair recognizes the travel problem, so we've scheduled it in Butternut next time. Motion to adjourn.
Ron will make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, second. Second by Dave Mindle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carried, we're adjourned. Thank you.